All right, this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Garden Public Schools Board of Directors and we'll now call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, will you satisfy us to having a quorum?
Yeah, but quorum, sir.
Okay, we have a quorum. And if you will, can you lay this into the?
I will. If you'll bow with me, we'll say prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for tonight. Lord, we just thank you for allowing us to come together to discuss the business of the Garden School District. God, I just pray that you help us with wisdom and insight as we make decisions for our school and our children and our staff and faculty that work here. God, we just thank you for your divine hand of protection that you have held over our school district and we continue to ask for that. God, we just thank you for all the things that you do for us every day. Amen.
Amen.
If you will stand and we'll say pledge allegiance.
First, we need to go into executive session for two minutes. Yes, yes. We've got some personnel matters, so we'll now enter into executive session. We'll go to my office.
Okay.
We have a special recognition.
Where for special recognitions, please?
I'm confused. Now, we got told I was whack at agenda.
Yeah, we got the prayer and the pledge allegiance.
But the next thing is what we just handled. Before we get to special recognition, let's give it an agenda.
Well, we got special recognition that we're back in, back in line. So we moved prayer and pledge allegiance ahead of that. So we went into special executive session and now we're back out. And now we're at record for special recognition standard. So we just jumped those two ahead of schedule.
We have several to a nice night, which is always a good thing. And we love to celebrate our people and the people who are serving us, bringing them to our community. And so with school being back in session, we also have some staff we wanted to recognize and some students as well. So some of my recognition, my people for recognition, they're not here, but I still want to say their names so everyone knows. We have Hayden Harper, who was kindergarten student of the month for August. And so she was selected as a primary campus student of the month. Since I have two campuses, I picked a student from each campus to recognize tonight. And we also have sixth grader Alessandra Fernandez. So I wanted to say a little bit about Alessandra. He was recommended by his teachers, not only for excellent academic performance, but also behavior. He just sets the example for everyone. He truly is a leader every day. And he reaches out and helps others. He's athletic and has good sportsmanship skills along with it. You know, that's a pair that we like to see at school. And he serves whenever needed at school, always helps the teachers, always helps staff and students. So I want to recognize Alessandra. We are glad that mom got, forever got to pencil that.
Mom and dad, don't stand up. Thank you.
So another member of our family, that's what we call ourselves. We call ourselves a family at Cape Elementary. And that we wanted to recognize, she was our staff member of the month for August is Miss Rachel Key. Miss Rachel has served for a long time in pre-K and this year is her first year in first grade. And she has just adapted like a hero, like you wouldn't believe. And she's been just the epitome of positivity on the primary campus. Always have it. We can always count on her for an encouraging word and just optimism all the time.
Let me just say, where your mom was? I was walking up to the pre-K building. And there's a door in the middle and coming out and asked, who are you and why are you here? And I said, well, I just came to see how everything was going. So we didn't go wrong.
She also makes us get fix washout words and she knows a secret recipe that is famous in Garden, like Miss Palmer's recipe. And she has blessed us with that anyways. Our teacher of the month that I would like to recognize is Mr. Larry Boggs. Mr. Boggs, this is his second year with us. He is a third grade teacher. He also served for different teachers maternity leave and put him on. And so does an interventionist before joining us as a classroom teacher. So Mr. Boggs, he feels long. He's very passionate about everything he does. You won't find anyone who loves the students more. I'm sorry.
There's this, this is my lovely wife. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Boggs always has an encouraging word for everyone and just, he always finds a way to lift everybody up, child or staff member. And I tell you, I mean, it's kind of like his sixth sense, like just a calling that he has that he just knows when people need a little word of motivation and encouragement to get through the day. So we really appreciate him. So I have two more for me. And these are groups that I want to recognize on behalf of the whole district because of their generosity to our students. One of them is not present, but I do want to announce them so they get the recognition. Trent in Rivers Health and Rehabilitation. And the representative that helped us out was Miss Kathy Green, who is a native from Gorden. But they donated backpacks to some of our students. And so we just wanted to recognize them for their generosity. And so if we'll give them a thank you. And another one, this is a, this is a name that's been very common in Gorden because of the significant outreach that has grown from their ministry. And it's the Way, the Way Ministries. And so if I would like for all of you to come, if you don't mind, all of you to come and stand so we can recognize you all and give you a round of applause. The Way Ministries, they serve our students, our community, our families in a lot of different capacities, but they were very generous. They donated backpacks full of supplies, including earbuds. And I don't know if they planned on it, but they brought our backpacks during the hardest week ever. And so they dropped the backpacks off one day and the next day they brought enough water bottles for my whole campus. So I really appreciate it. One more picture, sorry.
I'm not the overachiever that Kim is, so I had two. And one of mine is not here, but I do want to say a few words about her. Michaela Williams. She's an eighth grader at the high school. And I put out for my teachers, tell me someone who you think is just exemplifying positivity and what we need. And the storms told me without a doubt, it was Michaela that this year she had really chosen to focus on her attitude and putting off positive energy. So she's just been a positive presence in her classroom. So we will recognize her for that. If you want to give her a round. The other one I'm recognizing, I had a hard time getting here because she stays behind the scenes and does everything, and that's Jessica Williams. If you've been in the high school and had to come through the office for anything, then you know who Jessica is. She is the first face that everyone sees. She's sometimes the last face they see when they leave. If there is a child that needs to be checked out, that needs to go see the doctor, that needs to go to the dentist, that needs to go anywhere or needs to go back to class, Jessica can find them. And I would have been completely lost last year without her. She goes above and beyond for our kids, for our teachers, for our entire campus, and we just really appreciate it. And I'm, I'm so glad, as a former student, and I'm so glad to have her back working with me at the high school. And I just appreciate her. Yeah, I'm sad she didn't bring them all.
Y'all are thankful.
Well, I was walking through there one day and there's these blond haired kids. I don't think all of them y'all, but they volunteered. One of them sitting on the counter, I'm like, yeah, you down from that? She said, my mom left me sit up here. And I said, well, thanks. And when I get tall enough, I can stand on the ground and look at you. I can't, and I got you all over. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all.
So everyone who was recognized, you're welcome today for the duration of the board meeting, but you're also invited to leave at this time of year.
Next item of business, we need to consider the personnel package from executive session. Okay, we got a motion. We got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed. Next item business, need to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Anybody have a question about the board minutes?
I make a recommendation, we approve the minutes, are we fifteen, twenty, twenty minutes?
We got a motion. Save the motion. Got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed. Then we go to the financial report. Dr. Law, I'll turn it over to you.
Do you like to talk with the board about the financial reports and if there's any questions about the financial report?
If you'll notice, I did put two of the board reports in there for this time. One of those is from the report for last year. We did a preliminary closeout early July. And then there were some things that have to take place where we visit a couple of rounds and when I have negative balance, we have to take care of, so I wanted you to see exactly how it comes in then at the end of the year. And so I went ahead and played it. It includes July one, through June, sorry, for two thousand twenty-three, your school year. And then of course, there's a report for four, four August in there.
I'm gonna note that in the minutes.
After you did, that answered my question. I didn't see that. So I'm good. For change. We want to talk about the finance report since we are already here. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
That'd be the next part, the budget. If you want to talk about the budget.
You will see that when I do budget, especially for operating fund, try to make sure that my, I budget the income and I budget expenses to match. And if those two are not matching, then I usually budget a transfer either into building fund or out of building fund. This one has a thirty-five thousand, the lower thirty-five thousand dollar transfer out of building fund. I'd be really surprised if that happened. We've been pretty, I usually budget bringing we usually go, I usually get, I usually try to make sure I take the worst case scenario, revenue and the worst case scenario on expenses. So using my expenses are basically a little higher, but revenue is budgeted a little lower than what we usually do. One thing about it is last year, because of the drastic increase in insurance, that insurance did not get paid. Usually it's paid at the end of the year. It did not get paid until the beginning, to July of this year. So this budget actually has two years worth of insurance premiums budgeted into it, which is a large number. And also for the village, the village, you really won't see the majority of your village until probably October, November of twenty-four, which will be into the next school year. So I'll budget a very small amount for the middle, for the additional village for this, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We'll see the majority of that in the next, next year, twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Was there any talk about going back on insurance and them trying to state trying to help?
They did. In fact, we got a check from them that would match the percentage that the governor said that we would be getting. I don't remember that number.
Twenty-eight thousand and twenty-eight.
Okay, but that's a one time.
It's a one time.
Twenty-three, eight seventy-eight.
Okay.
Also, you, you'll know too, that Department of Education is, is also researching to see where they might be able to trim that some more next year. Try to figure out how we can get a better rate and pass. The problem has been because of the tornadoes and bad weather and all the damages that happened, they changed our category. So may hit your homes too for too long.
Yeah.
I will, let me just say this other thing. This budget, a lot of the numbers that came in from the state did not come in in June or July like was anticipated. A lot of the numbers Ron had to wait on to try to figure this thing out. It about drove me nuts and I probably about drove her crazy. Saying, I got to look at something, give me something. So I apologize, Ron, on, on video recording. But it's, I want you all to know how hard she worked on this to try to get this done.
I'm saying kudo. Cause I had two questions.
Especially after the arms act.
Wait a minute, what's this now morning premiums for two years? And I guess you made the same question when I asked you. So I'm just gonna say, I got a question again. I know it's a shock, but no question. You answer my question. Anybody else got a question? President, I make a motion, we accept the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four budget and the financials package.
Okay, we got a motion. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed. Now, next item of business is some business stuff. We've got the gym and the construction things.
Right, and, and French architects is here, the engineer that worked on the project is here, Mike McKenzie is here. We opened bids August, I think August the eighth. They were in process of vetting it. We're also looking at the plans to make sure everything, the plans were the best process for Garden Schools. And we came back and these are the contractors that are listed that bid on it on the action item. And also the people that we checked or that we, whether we're selected because they have the best, and they, they were all vetted and so everything was, should be. So the price of the contractors was one million seven thousand eight hundred sixty-seven. And then Mr. McKenzie, McKenzie Construction gets a five percent for being the construction manager. That would be added on. So this would be divided out into two different funds. We have matching funds that are grant state funds, which, and they've already determined their level. And their level was, was capped at four hundred ninety-seven, six sixty-seven, which would leave us the balance of it. Now, I do want to amend, if you look at your action item, the contract, what I did not put on, on here was a one percent contingency, which is part of the guaranteed maximum price. So the guaranteed maximum price, if you want to write this number down, is one million, zero, six, eight, comma, three, three, eight, point zero, zero. That includes a one percent contingency, in case they find something that was not anticipated. If it's not used, it'll be, it will not be spent, it'll be returned to us. So that is what I'm asking that the board to accept these bids. And everyone here that was part of this process of vetting and making sure that we got contractors that we knew would be able to do it and the engineer involved. If you have questions or to approve it.
Where does that one percent contingency come from?
That would be part of our, our fund. So it'll be added to the district funding.
No, I mean, who, is that McKenzie? Or is that from?
No, it's McKenzie. It's part of McKenzie's.
That's, that's in case there's something that's not shown in the bids and in the, in the part that we're about to do. We're not charging that. It's only in case there's something that comes up that
Is that materials? Or is that materials or labor?
Materials and labor, whatever it is.
Just some.
What it, what it does, it goes into the guaranteed maximum price. So they're guaranteeing it's not going to go with that. So if they tear into a wall and they find a problem, that gives them an extra ten thousand dollars roughly to fix that problem. If they find more than ten thousand problem, then it comes out of Mr. McKenzie's part. So that's, that's just part that they put in there just to make sure, give them a little buffer area in case.
How many, how many air conditioning units is there's going to be for the whole gym?
Yeah, there's two main ones. I'm Alex Trulove. I'm the engineer contractor for the project. There's two main ones that serve the gym, gym area. And then I'll pull the plans here, but I think six other systems, five that serve the back locker room and office areas. And then another four systems that serve the front two restrooms and, and the concession lobby area.
Could you repeat that, two for the gym and what then?
There's two large packaging units for the gym. That's the bulk of the cost for the project. And then there's five small systems serving the back locker rooms and offices. And then another four small systems serving the front restrooms and the lobby. If you all have any other questions about the technical time, be happy to explain, walk you through it.
How many units are those that are doing the lobby and the restroom?
The lobby and the restrooms combines here. Just the front portion, are you talking about?
Yeah, the restrooms, the lobby, you said there was four units.
Right, so we've got, there's eight tons total. There's two, two and a half systems and two, one and a half systems.
Are they going to be conventional or mini splits or what?
Or mini splits. Yeah, we, I was trying to reduce as much ductwork and air terminals as possible to keep costs down. Guys, so the new one was facing ceilings, that's for, for the restrooms, locker rooms, offices. The only spot that differs from that is the front lobby. They use traditional air terminals to try to keep it a little nicer in there. Instead, but that was, that was really it on the project. Everything else, we tried to keep as bare bones possible to keep costs down.
But Mike, are those insulated? Are those, are those duct, is that ductwork insulated? Or how, is there any insulation that goes in with this, like in above the locker room? Anything? Office areas that you mentioned?
So those, they're, they're a all-in-one cassettes. So there's no, the cassette itself is insulated. There's no ductwork or anything involved with that. Basically, it's a little fan and a coil all in an insulated housing. It draws the air up through the center and then distributes it out through the sides. It's about the same, it's not about exactly the same size as one of these little air terminals here. It just fits right in a two by two square in the ceiling.
Are there any more questions, anybody? If there's any more questions, can we get a motion to accept? Let's say stands.
When I make a motion, if we accept the, the B is presented.
We have a motion. We got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
Please, please note in the minutes, if you would, that this is a contract with a guaranteed maximum price of one million sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight. That is the guaranteed maximum price. Hopefully that, that is with a one percent contingency in all bids with the construction managers expenses was one million and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-five cents.
So we'll be contacting the state to let them know.
Yes, sir.
The next item of business is in the curriculum and the instruction.
The school intercom system is one that needs to be updated and there's three systems that Mr. Riley actually talked with and worked through. And, and so we, we got three bids for that and they were all very close. The one that we're asking that the board approve is one that can be upgraded, one that can be modified annually. And this is all the software, hardware and things that we need. Some of the equipment we already have could be used. And retrofitted, anything else you want to add, Mr. Riley?
So basically, like you said, we're going to be giving some of that equipment that we already have in the classrooms, like speakers, and only replace the ones that are busted. But like you said, it was going to give us an opportunity to expand and also communicate across campuses. Cause right now we don't have that kind of communication. For instance, if the middle school and you can call the cafeteria, the band hall, they have to call the high school by phone and then the high school pages, the cafeteria. But this system is going to allow us to really do whatever we want and also add our belts. And that's going to make it a lot better. But each room is actually going to have its own belt if you wanted to, in that case. But there's so much we can do. And if we ever build, new build rooms, then we'll just add to the system we already have. But it does require, like you said, a license every year.
So there'll be an annual fee of a thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to do that.
The other two, the other two beds are pretty much identical. They have the same system. That will pretty much give us what we have. Just make it new. There's nothing, you know, we can't do as much as we can, like we can with the other third bed, the one we recommended. And this is going to allow us to communicate between classroom and office. It's a, it's a two-way communication, which we already have it, but just in case you're wondering.
So every classroom can communicate back with the office?
Yes. And that's the way we have it right now, but a lot of them are, are pretty old and some of them not even working correctly. If, if, if really this system that we have was the one we brought in from the high school back downtown, it's that old.
So the, the office can communicate with a singular classroom at a time?
Yes.
And with all, and with all classes?
They can make an all call, yeah.
And with all buildings. So in the event of emergency, you can make a, a global to everywhere. If we have a situation that we need.
And the nice thing, like I said, is our belts. Right now, middle school and even, I think with you guys as well, the belt system is so outdated as well. This is going to kind of give you a two for one kind of deal.
And in the event that we add another building in this compound, it will expand to that new building more readily.
Correct.
Is that Blum USA? Is that a reputable company? Have you got any experience?
So Blum is just basically, which I like the middleman. And we're, we're going to be working with another local company that's going to be doing all the configuration, installing.
So does the grant cover the entire cost of, of this?
Uh, yes, as far as I know.
And this comes from Stronger Connect?
Yes, this was already, and it was, and what was put in there was close to eighty-three thousand nine hundred. I'm not exactly sure what the number was totally, but it's going to be right in the ballpark.
And that's only going to replace your elementary school here and the option here. We're not going to do anything to the one in town.
I just have a general question about the grant. Is, is this, does this, does this go specifically to supply this type of equipment? Or are there other things that can be purchased with it?
All of this, this grant was also safety and security. So it's stronger connect to make sure that we have a stronger relationship with who's going on. So there's three items, I believe, in the stronger connections grant. That was part of it. Our Genesis project where we have door access control. There was one more that was in there too, but all of those were, was pre-approved back several months ago. That was on, this is the, the third one of that group. But it, it was focused was on safety and security. Part of it was our police officer.
If you have any questions, can I?
We got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in the sense same sign.
No. You said Fleming network.
The Bloom USA. You start over there.
I'd like to accept the recommendation for the B presenting.
Okay, got a motion. We got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in the sense same sign. That motion pass.
The next item in here is the uh, for licensure of, to, for licensed nurses paid, we need to increase that. So we might be able to get someone to substitute for it during the day. If we have an event, uh, or we have people that are out, we, we do have the need to have a licensed nurse in the district. Uh, we have a, a extremely fragile child that we have to be sure that someone is available. And we also wanna be able to have a substitute piece. So we need, we're looking to increase that rate of pay for a sub, sub nurse. The other one is because of federal law. If an individual works for the district and they're an hourly employee, then they cannot work and yet receive a set fund fee if they were to work our gates. We have to pay them an hourly rate, but then the way we have it set up currently is a set rate and we, we cannot do that. I've talked to the attorneys at ASBA and they said this is a federal thing. Uh, and they can stop and go and work the gate in Archidelfia if they would like to and get that set rate, but not here because they would still be considered an hourly employee. I want to open it up so that they can have access to the opportunities to work those gates.
I'm going to approve the recommendation by the administration for substitute licensed nurse paying for work, gate worker paying.
Yeah, we got a motion second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in the sense same sign. That motion pass.
There was a, a policy update that was given to the board last month to review. And I'm asking the board to approve those policies that were there so we can put them into our book. Mr. McDonald, would you note that? Were there any questions about policies?
Like the state tells what to do.
Yeah, that's right.
I have no question.
It's your option. You're, as the board president, you can wait until he returns or we just note that he was absent for the vote.
Let's go ahead.
I make a motion that we accept the uh, board policy update as presented.
We have a motion.
Take motion.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in the sense same sign. That motion pass.
Please note that it was a five zero vote with one absent. Uh, the next one is, is something that we have to show the board and, and present it to the board that it is a statement of assurances for our federal programs that we will not violate the law knowingly. That we will, we will abide by all of the S A requirements and all the requirements that are, uh, that the state has imposed following federal law. So this is something that we, we should be doing annually. Um, this, this McDonald will make, be very happy if we, we have this approved. All this is straight out of the federal guidelines and has to be presented to the board for approval. The other only option to this is we don't accept it and we turn back the federal monies.
Can do that.
Policy or, yeah, I'm going to make up the recommendation of the administration on the Department of Education and the insurance.
We have a motion.
Take a motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in the sense same sign. Let motion pass.
Now the next item will be, over the next year, we will have to provide a fence that will provide security for the entire, every building. Or, or compound where kids might walk. Uh, that's, that's coming. I'm hoping there'll be grant money to help with that as we go through. But I'd like to start that process now. So it will be able with the elementary school that would mirror the concrete slab that we just poured. Uh, it would, I think it will help to keep people driving into the grass. We had eighteen to two foot deep ruts on the edge of the concrete. It will be destroyed. Uh, so the fence would, would mirror it. Our maintenance folks spent a half a day or longer today repairing it. I'd like to keep people off that area of the grass. Uh, we're going to have to anyway. Uh, this would come in at fifty-five hundred dollars. It would provide two utility gates and also a gate along the sidewalk.
When you say when it's coming, are you gonna be talking about like a perimeter gate all the way around the school?
Fence around it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you're saying.
That's coming.
Okay. Yeah.
This, this is a, is a six-foot chain link fence. It'd be like what's around the playground. Now if we go, if we, we can go to a more elaborate gate, a more elaborate fencing. Just remember the, when we do that, pricing goes up. I'm not a great fan for security of having a chain link fence, but it's better than, than nothing. And that, that a six-foot fence is more difficult to, uh, to climb, at least for most of us. Some of the, some folks it wouldn't be. But it would, it would give some measure of security. I'll say that part. This is just an option that, that was driven partly because of how badly it was destroyed the other day, that it's gonna tear that concrete up. But also knowing that this is going to come. To, that safety and security part of it is going to require us to have it for the district.
So this fifty-five hundred dollars, we, we have the fans exactly where now?
It goes from the corner of the elementary building, goes across that sidewalk that goes, that goes up to the side door. And then mirrors the actual concrete process that goes out to the road where that yellow keeps truck drivers from driving their log trucks up underneath there in the parking lot to destroy it. It goes out to the street. It goes out to the stop sign.
So it's not coming down sixty-seven?
Not yet.
Okay.
And they can drive it. That'll be the next, that'll be the next piece. So I want to present this to the board as an option. If you, if you don't wanna do that, it's okay. I get that part of it, but if you do. I've got pictures of, of it too. You weren't the only one that introduced it to me. Uh, it, but that's, it, it's sad that, that we, that our, our community doesn't think more about taking care of that than, than that. And I understand it's close. Well, there's other ways to drive through there than come up that edge where, where all that was on that concrete. But that's not how they got out there, I hope.
They've been, they've been parking there for years.
I just refused to go there. Yeah, so I can't put that on the community. I just refused to do it. I wasn't going to that room.
It'd be nice if we could see into the future to make that fence look like what we're, what we're gonna end up with.
I would love to have a brick fence at the bottom with vertical rods that are, that are cross, all the way across it. I think it's a beautiful fence. I think it's expensive. It's also difficult to climb, but it is very expensive.
Okay, with a piss like this.
I mean, if we do a regular chain link, you could pull it up. If we decide to do something different.
You could.
I'm going to make the, take the recommendation of the administration for the security fencing.
So we got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in the sense same sign. That motion pass.
Uh, on the agenda, you're gonna see every month board to board transfers because by law they can walk up at the moment for the board and hand it to us. That we're done. So there was no action for that. Now we're to the fun part of where we are now. So uh, Mr. Crowley, would you mind coming up front?
Yeah, but we are gonna, we are gonna turn the lights on and do all that.
Well, that's, that is part of the plan too, to make sure those lights are already on. We want the softball field on yet and we want that runway lit as well. And, and for our band, uh, going back and forth. There. Is, Mr., does anyone not know Mr. Crowley? It's Mark Crowley, our agriculture teacher and we stole him back. I heard about it again the other day, Mr. Crowley. So.
Well, it's a pleasure to be back in Gorden. Uh, I am a lifetime, uh, yeah, I was born in Gorden, right down, right down in downtown Gorden and uh, taught here in my first teaching job. I, I'm just glad to be able to come back and rebuild the program. Uh, I started July, actually in June, coming up and doing some things, trying to get things, you know, back in order. And I wanted to share a few things we've done so far since we started. Anything like this?
We're not bad.
Okay, alright. So we started off in August and we had a community meeting uptown and we had about seventy-five people that came to that meeting. Uh, with a lot, a really strong interest in building up our FFA program and our four H program together. Uh, you know, I kind of feel like four H is a feeder program for FFA program. Uh, so we had a really good attendance that night at that meeting. A lot of good feedback from that. Uh, a lot of ice cream. My kids did anyway. I felt that once, once they got home. Uh, but this is the courses that we're offering this year. Uh, intro down to forestry equipment operations. And we've got eighty-one uh, total students this year, uh, enrolled in ag classes. And that's, I think that's uh, increased from last year. Uh, and I've got a pretty good group of kids that, that's involved with that. Uh, at different, different areas, different grades. You've got a good eighth grade, uh, a large eighth grade uh, group of kids, twenty-seven during first period. So. Here we start today. Uh, we had officers election a few weeks ago, uh, and these are our officers that we elected. Uh, they were excited to do that. Kind of a different process that they're going through. Uh, you know, being an FFA officer gives those kids a, a great opportunity uh, to learn some leadership uh, skills, some traits they can take out with them uh, throughout their, their education career and also throughout their jobs. So we're proud of those kids and be, be able to work with them uh, this year. A lot of different things. We had FFA meeting during lunch one day. Uh, about twenty-five kids came during lunch. Uh, we talked about some things that we offered out this year and things we've gone on getting done um, in FFA.
Is that a picture of the shop right there?
This is, this is a picture of the shop.
It looks like it's a little cleaner than it was.
It is. We put a lot of hours uh, in that this summer. Uh, a lot of hot hours in that in the summer, trying to get that straightened up. Uh, but and then once, once the kids got back, they helped me do some things, but we, it's been a, it's, it's still not completed, but it's a lot better than what it was whenever we started uh, this summer. Alright, then during, uh, in our classroom, uh, these are pictures of what we've done in the shop. We put together some tables that were at the elementary uh, campus over there. That were full of ants. They've been there, I guess, all summer. And so we have, got some kids that got those. We were able to assemble those and we'll get those delivered. Uh, started working on some woodworking projects in the shop, uh, kind of a basic thing, learning how to measure. A lot of kids have no idea how to measure anything. So that's kind of a basic skill we've tried to work on. Uh, some birdhouses will leak pretty severely that they, that they built, but uh, some will do, do okay. Uh, in the classroom, we're looking at basic animal science stuff. Our intro kids are learning how to uh, say the FFA creed. Trying to make them memorize that uh, as we go through and kind of learn that activity that I, I had to do when I went through FFA. Then we had county fair last week. Uh, so we had a lot of students that participated in that. These are some of our winners through our different uh, species that, that showed there. Uh, we also had one, uh, one of our students, one where the beauty contest there for the pageant for the fair. Then on the Friday, the fair, they had a petting zoo where the different uh, groups from Archidelfia head start come through. Some elementary uh, classes came through. I think daycares come through and they were able to get an experience on the fair of, of, you know, interacting with those animals and also with the kids that were there that day. And that's our to, that's our garden group that was represented there at the fair. Uh, that's a, one of the larger groups of kids that, that I, that I can remember going through. Uh, and that group of, you know, that's kind of the future group of leaders, I think, that'll come up through our program uh, throughout, you know, as we try to build that. So it'll take a little while to get some of those, but I'm excited about that group that's there. I was able to go last week and visit with the sixth grade. They're going through a uh, a unit there about, you know, agriculture from the beginning. And I was able to go visit with them and and try to sell the ag program to them as they have an option next year to take it as a seventh grader. And most of them raised their hands. So I, you know, that they wanted to take ag when they came to the seventh grade. So hopefully they'll, they'll wanna do that. But uh, they, they were excited to learn that day a little bit about agriculture. Also, we're uh, gonna start up an alumni and supporters group. And this will be for uh, people that went through Gorden FFA and also people that just wanna support the program. And I've got some uh, different things that'll come out the next few weeks about how to, how to support our group. This is something that if a chapter is gonna be strong, they really need a strong FFA alumni group, uh, or supporter group that helps them out. Uh, with different things like, you know, helping kids buy FFA jackets. You know, those are not free. Some families can't afford those. So help them with something like that or help them kiss the cost to go to uh, leadership contest or to a fair or something like that. An alumni group comes in and helps out quite a bit with that to be able to get those kids to experience that. So why does ag it matter? You know, I, I think our goal as a district, I hope, hopefully is that we wanna see kids graduate. That's our number one goal is to see kids be able to walk across that stage. And research shows that a kid that's involved with CTE, agri, uh, student-based organization like FFA, uh, it has an impact on their graduation rate. Uh, that graduation, graduation rate goes up uh, for those who are enrolled in CTE courses. Uh, it goes up quite a bit. It says there that students are, are two point three times more likely to remain in school if they're involved in a CTE uh, organization, FFA organization or ag education. And to me, a big one here is that the chances of a student not dropping out raises up eighty-one percent if they're involved in something at school like a ag-based program. So I think that's, these numbers, research shows that. But I just wanna say that I've seen that. Like I've seen that being an ag teacher, I don't have to go to research. I've seen it. I've seen kids that uh, they had no interest at all in being in high school at all, but they got involved in agri and that gave them a, a reason to come to school. It gave them a pathway to come to school, a place to fit, a, a purpose to have there. So I've seen it with my own eyes. I've seen that already this year with a couple of students and I've talked to their parents and they've said that, you know, they didn't really wanna come to school. And now they, they wanna go to school to see what's gonna happen that day, see what's gonna go on uh, in ag that day. So I believe that this is a program uh, that, that can give kids a head start and give kids motivation to come to school and be active in it. So I, I think that's important to see why uh, ag matters. So what are some things that, that I think that, that would help us as we go along? Uh, one of them would be uh, shop equipment. There's a lot of equipment that we need to, to be able to do some things that we uh, would like to. There's a Perkins grant that I think will probably get uh, that will buy a new CNC machine uh, for the shop. Also, air conditioning for the shop would be, uh, would be great. Some, or some way to just push some air around in there because it's very hot during the, during the summer. Uh, also some animal science equipment to be able to have students have some hands-on activities with uh, animals. Uh, and then an animal science facility, uh, someplace where we could have a, a building, a, a built that they could actually go and, and, you know, have their own livestock or have access to school livestock and be able to have the interaction with it daily. Uh, a, as they progress through the program. And then at some point in forestry plot, so they can see uh, you know, how, how you would manage land. How would you manage a pot of, of timber uh, from the time that it, that it's planted, the time it's harvested, kind of go through that whole process. So uh, tho- those are things that I think that would really help this program uh, go. I mean, there, there's been a tremendous amount of support already that I've felt from the community uh, and other teachers. And I think that it's there and I think that we can really grow uh, this program uh, into something that's great. And it'll take everybody's help to do that, but I think that we can do it. So is there any, any questions about?
What area of interest do you see out of children, like animal science or ag mechanics? What, what do you see the most?
Ag, ag mechanics, animal science are the two right now that I can see that there's, you know, some interest in. Uh, the kids are really enjoyed getting out in the shop and doing, like doing some things, you know, with their hands. Uh, that's something that they really have enjoyed doing so far.
Good job.
We have, we, we got a, a grant for air conditioning for the gym. Is it possible to get a grant for air conditioning for this building?
It's maybe possible. We, we're currently looking at how we could air condition that building that. Do you know what, where we stand on that right now? Okay, so.
Shop area is too dirty and it stays logged up and it never function possibly. So the mini split is, is out. So I'm gonna have to get a new bid.
Okay.
On a different AC system.
I've got two self-contained units that I took off the Exxon building in Archidelfia. It's nearly new. And they just bolt down on the, on the roof. You can have those. Those are, they would be plenty to cool the whole shop.
Would it be easy to keep clean like, like Kendall said?
Well, they're, they're self-contained in the, in the roof. So you're not gonna have a whole lot of. I think that'd be fine.
You making a donation?
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
Will.
We'll make a motion to accept your donation. But try to spread it today.
But we get on the agenda for next month. But what, I get with Mr. McKenzie, what? And we'll look, what we can do about that.
I have one question. In the future, is there any way you can make them birdhouses so we can hang them? Right now, I'm trying to figure out how to put up.
You need to hire that engineer down there.
I got another question.
Okay.
You don't have anything about like a greenhouse? Do you see something like that being?
Well, I, I'll tell you that for, for one teacher, an animal science and Ag mechanic program, that's kind of, that's a lot. I mean, adding another program to study on top of that is a lot to do for one person. I do know that if, if that's something we wanted to do, that there is state grants, startup grants for greenhouses that you can get like eighty-five percent of the cost of that through those startup grants. Uh, but just for, you know, just for one person, it would be a lot to be able to do three programs.
A bunch of meats thrown around.
I hope I've cut my last piece of meat. Cause that's something else that takes a lot of, that really, that's all you can do if you're good.
So do you kind of have a, you know, this seems like you're kind of like my futuristic dream, this is what it is, but kind of do you have like an outline plan and kind of what we need to do as a board to help you implement some of these?
Well, I think the, the first thing for our animal science facility would be finding a place to put it. You know, I would, I would love it to be right out behind the building so I can just walk out there during the class, but that land back there, I don't think is locally owned. So I don't, it'd be hard to get, get some of that land. But just to find a place to put this would be the first thing to be able to put the, the facility uh, and then to go from that point, trying to find funding to, to do it.
And not in the floodplain?
Not in a floodplain. No, no, sir.
What, what kind of animal science equipment are you looking at?
This would be things that we could use just to, to work, to work livestock. There used to be a round, a round pin back there a while back. Uh, but some, some equipment like that to work them, that our kids had also used for, for projects that they're showing, they're like the grimace stands. Uh, we have a set of scales that the bottom is rusted out with those scales, so we don't have a functioning set of scales as a chapter.
How do you, how do you weigh livestock just some of those little scales?
We hauled them in the fairgrounds.
Didn't weigh them all the time like before.
Right. We should, they should get weighed every, about every week, especially at this point, this should be every week. We just can't do it without, without scales.
How much size are those scales?
Uh, I mean, there, you can get some portable scales from eight hundred dollars up to those Paul's scales are about forty-five hundred dollars now.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate you coming in tonight to do that. Riley. Like to talk about our Save the Children grant presentation and introduce your gang.
I do have to brag on Mr. Polly and his student because we received a grant from the Wildlife Game and Pitch Mission uh, in the spring for outdoor classrooms, which included like the tables and awnings and stuff. And so we had our, um, items purchased and delivered. And they were at the primary school and in a week, I mean, even the one thing he got, I already picked him up and sent him to high school, gathered together and were ready to get into the, onto the campus. So we're excited. Really grateful for y'all. So, one of the we're partnering with this organization called Save the Children. And so we asked them to come tonight and just to present a little bit of information with you about the multiple programs that they have available to our community to reach our students in a variety of different ways. And so we have two with us tonight. And so I'll introduce our Gorden native first. This is Kayla Ladd. She's an alumni from Gorden. She's the lead associate for the early childhood program with Save the Children. So come on up, Kayla. Great. I'm glad you got to come tonight so that we could all see her face since she's a native. Good to see you guys today. We also have Sarah Fletcher and she's the lead associate with the school age program. So her partnership's going to be the one, one of the first that we get going. So. Yes, alright. So, good evening, everyone. Um, so we'll start off just giving you guys a little runaround about Save the Children and what we do. So we have been in Arkansas for four years now. We have eleven programs that we have grown from the bottom to here we are now. And Sarah and I were two of the, um, lead associates that have started this program here in Arkansas. Um, so we have those eleven sites and right now we're looking to grow. So we really consider Gorden as one of the, uh, areas that would benefit from the programs that we currently have. So. So our mission is that all children in rural America have a healthy, strong foundation to thrive as learners and in life. So all of our programs, all of the curriculum, everything that we have surrounds our mission, uh, for Save the Children. So I'm going to give Sarah an opportunity to kind of talk about school age and what we do. But this slide talks about our different programs that we currently have. And this is just three of our programs. We actually have four now. So we have our early childhood program and that's the Early Steps to School Success Program. I'm the lead associate for that program. We focus on early steps to school success, home visiting. We focus on a bookbag exchange program as well as a Kinder Boost program. Um, the school age program focuses on in-school and after-school programs as well as the summer boost camp. And then we also have community engagement that focuses on partners with families, schools and communities to support children. We have G I K, which is Gift and Kind, uh, Food Insecurity and Collective Impact. So we like to look at our program as a holistic thing. We start with our pregnant moms all the way up to our school age students. And then we also like to get our community involved with our chil- children's education as well. And while we're on this slide, I'll talk a little bit more about community engagement. So that's one of our programs that we bring our community involved with our child, children's education. We like to have events where we involve the community in those things. We like to do things like build, um, story walks in your parks, rebuild your parks, still build and build story walks so that when kiddos come to the park, they can read stories with their moms as they're walking the trail. We like to put book nooks up throughout the communities, things like that. We also have G I K, which is Gift and Kind. So that's where our big donors, um, bring in items monthly to our schools. They get delivered directly to the school districts. Our districts have received things like Instapots, coats, socks, books, a lot of books, uh, um. And so hand sanitizer during COVID, all of our districts got hand sanitizers, masks, everything that they needed to make sure our kids were safe within the school district. Um, and then we have food insecurity and we have opportunities for our schools to fill out for grants where they receive lots of food, um, secure, uh, food items. If you have cold storage, you can receive milk, uh, food cold stored items, things like that. And then I will let Sarah speak about school age. Alright, so we have several settings that we serve in school age. So we have in-school, um, where we go in and have thirty-minute kind of intervention sessions. And so we're really looking to target those kids that are more of those bubble kids, those kids that are behind grade level and getting them caught up to grade level. And then we have our after-school program, which, uh, they said that's where we're looking to start for, first to fill that need that you'll have for after-school. So that involves a healthy snack or a meal. And then, uh, we do thirty-minute rotations. So we have two different literacy stations that get, they go through as well as learning about, uh, nutrition, education and physical education combined in that. And then we also offer a summer program, which can be anywhere from four to six weeks for six hours a day. Again, that focuses on everything that we have in our after-school program. And then also we bring in math and STEM and community service projects and, uh, just really looking to engage, uh, the children in more of a fun summer vibe. And then we also have what we call Kinder Boost. This is one of our very popular programs and it's really targeting those kids that haven't had any kind of school setting. And so we're looking to help them get familiar with the school. They come in and get to see the teachers and kind of learn that routine and get to be familiar with the school, both the kids and the parents. And so that really helps kind of ease that anxiety and fear and kind of gets those beginning literacy skills going. And so typically that's right before school starts and that's a two-week program that we have. And that's led by pre-K or kindergarten teachers. And then you'll see over here, we have family engagement and that's an overarching theme in all of our programs. So we're really looking to involve the families and the school to make that child successful. And then. Um, and then you can see, I won't go through and read all this, but you can see that all of our programs do hit the science of reading. So our, our emergent reader, that's our kindergarten and first graders. And then our developing readers is that second, third, fourth, fifth, depending on how far your school goes and where the need is. So you could see that it targets, it targets all the phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary, comprehension, fluency. So all those skills that children need to be learned or need to be taught. And then we just had, um, an outside agency go in and do some, um, data results for us. So this is actually from this past program year. So all the kindergarten students that were, um, involved in our, our programs gained an additional nine weeks in reading. Our first graders gained an additional eleven weeks in reading. And then our second graders gained an additional fifteen weeks in reading. And then our third graders gained an additional twenty-three weeks in reading. And then right here you can see it's a comparison. So the blue is the Save the Children participants. And in the gray, that is, uh, this, this, their peers that were in the same school that it's a comparison. So you can see the children in our program versus kids that were even a little bit higher than actually where our Save the Children kids started. And so you can see, um, the results that we had from that. And then I'm gonna let Kayla go through early steps and then we'll take questions.
Okay. And so we're not going to start with early steps, but we're going to eventually get there because this is my baby. I love the early steps program. And so because I am from Gorden, we have to have early steps in Gorden eventually. So the Early Steps to School Success Program, these, this is our circle. This is what makes up our program. Language development and pre-literacy program, home visiting and parent-child groups, support families, prenatal kindergarten, and then community connections. So everything that we do uh, makes this circle whole. And I'm going to talk about a little bit of what we do. So we have an Early Steps to School Success curriculum that we provide to our coordinators. Our coordinators go into families' homes. They have twenty, uh, families that they recruit. And this can be pregnant moms all the way up to kids all the way up to three years old. So they recruit the families within the community. We like to identify the neediest kiddos in your community, whatever that looks like. It's going to look different from communities to communities. So whatever the neediest looks like in your community, we'll identify those families and we'll recruit them into our program. The coordinator will then complete two home visits per month with those families and they'll go in with the curriculum that we provide for them. So one thing I like about our curriculum is that we, um, allow our parents to be their teach, uh, child's first teacher. We allow them to identify their child's needs and that's what we focus on. Um, so those, well, our curriculum is set up in a way to where a family can tell us anything that they want to work on with their kiddo. And we can point out a lesson there and they, we can focus on that lesson and work with their kiddos with that. Uh, we have the home visiting where they complete two home visits per month with their coordinator. We also have developmental screenings, just so we can see where we are. And then we can also, um, see where we can support those kiddos. We have ASQs, which is Ages and Stages Questionnaires. They're completed every two months with their, um, home visitors. And this kind of gives the coordinators a guide and the families a guide, where their kiddos are, how can they support them? And then they can also see the growth. So what we look at when we come into, um, site visits to, with our coordinators is we're looking at those ASQ result, the results. Where did this family start? Where are they now? How can we support them? We also have PPVT testing, and this is what they do after they have been in the program for at least a year and then they're three years old. So that's a picture P body vocabulary test. And they're able to kind of see the results of the program with that test. We also have a new screening, which is called Piccolo Observation. And so this is a great way that the families get to go into the home, the coordinator's going to the home with a recorder and they record the family completing an activity together. And so what we do is we identify the positives that the mom is doing in the home with the chat kiddo. So the family will watch the video together and we're able to point out, this is what you're doing right. This is what you're doing a great job on. These are some things that we can work on to improve. Um, so those are our screenings and referrals. And we also provide referrals. So the coordinator will have to know the community, get used to the community, know the resources in the community. So when a family comes and say, hey, I may not have something, I might, we don't have groceries in this week. They have a resource to send to that family so that they can make sure they eat because they can't eat, it's hard for them to ask them to read a book. It's hard to ask them to do things like that. So we want to, we, we, we want to provide the resources and then also provide educational uh, curriculum and resources for them as well. And then we have a bookbag exchange program. We do the bookbag exchange program with our zero to three kiddos. And then we also do it with our head start kiddos, so our three to five kiddos. Um, that's when they get four high-quality raisin-to-reader books per week. Every week they get four new books in the home. So some of these kiddos go from no books in their home ever to four new books every week in their home. And our coordinators, um, encourage the moms every week, hey, read, read, read to your child, sing to your child, tell a story to your child. And we'll record it and track that in our database just to make sure that there is improvement every week. And people are picking up books, singing songs and telling stories to their kiddos more and more every week. Uh, we have noticed a drastic increase of reading in the home with that as well. Um, we also have parent-child groups and support groups that we do with our kiddos and our families. That's when we bring our zero to three and our three to five families together. We have a curriculum that the coordinator follows for that. And we, it's an opportunity to, to bring everyone together. We like to have them at the school so that families that never visit the school get the opportunity to get familiar with the school district to have that space and that time being at the school, seeing the teachers, seeing the principals and creating those positive relationships at an early age. Uh, we also support families in transitions. So they're transitioning from home to head start. We're going to try, help them, support them with that. Do you have your first certificates? Do you have all your information ready for head starts? We're going to make sure you guys have that and you're ready to go. We help them transition into kindergarten. Do you have all your registration's information ready? Do you need a tour of the school? We can take you on a tour of the school. We can introduce you to these uh, staff and teachers at the school so that you can feel comfortable with that transition. Um, an important thing that we do as well is community and connections. So we like for our coordinators to get to know the community, be very familiar with their community. Um, so because we're going to depend on the community, we want everyone involved. We want our, um, community stakeholders. We want our, um, small business to be involved with parent-child groups, to be involved with the community events that we do. So we go out into the community and do so, introduce our program. When we receive G I K, we give these things out to the community so we can start making those connections as well. Um, staff and training support. So I will be the staff that will be supporting the coordinator here at, um, Gorden. I'll come to the school district once a month, complete site visits with this coordinator for four to six hours. I provide them with all the technical training and support that they need. Any kind of support that they need, we provide it to them when it comes to training, just to make sure that the fidelity of our program is standing. And so all of these things just make up our Early Steps to School Success Program. That's all. Alright, any questions? I know it's a lot.
Is some of your home-based stuff, is it a lot internet-based? Cause I've seen the beginning of it, we was talking about rural and rural.
Yes.
We have holes in our internet service still right now. We're, we're in process
Yeah.
upgrading that, but it still hasn't made it community-wide yet.
Mm-hmm. Sorry. Uh, no internet-based. We have a curriculum that our coordinators take into the home. They take copies of the lessons into the home with the family and work with them together. Now during COVID, we did do virtual, but we also supported those families with that. If they needed wifi, we make sure that the families had those, uh, resources so that they could do virtual.
What's the expense of the district?
So overall, at the end of the day, we want to have a twenty-eighty split with the district. It does not start like that. We have school districts that have been in our program for four years now. They're still not at the twenty-eight percent. We want to work with the school district with what resources you have and cost share what you can. And we just, uh, increase each year. We're backed by TANF and public private. They just like to see that we have that buy-in with the school district and you guys are willing to put in for the program to be successful. So eventually an eighty-twenty split, but during the beginning, it's, we work with the school district with whatever you guys have that's available to support. And cost share could be, hey, we're going to help you guys with ink for, to print out flyers. So that's what we, we're going to support you with. Hey, we're going to use our buses to take the kids after school program. That's going to be our cost share, things like that. So we like to work with our school districts as much as possible.
You said eighty-twenty.
We're eighty. We're eighty.
You said that there was a Kinder Boost program, which is a teaching program, like a pre-K or kindergarten teacher?
Yeah. You, you guys would pick the kindergarten teachers. We would train the kindergarten teachers, make sure they have all the materials, all the supplies fully funded through Save the Children, the kindergarten, Kinder Boost program.
Miss Stevens, would force schools start?
It can be. Uh, we like to do it towards the end, uh, towards the end of summer so the kids can have it fresh on their mind. They're ready to go, um, when, after the Kinder Boost program is complete. Um, the Kinder Boost program has
Uh, when, after the Kinder Boost program is complete. Um, the Kinder Boost program has been a hit in Arkansas. All of our schools that have completed the Kinder Boost program, they do it every year afterwards. It's a great way to get those kiddos. Comfortable with, um, that setting, especially the kiddos who have not had any Head Start experience. And those are the ones that we like to recruit first.
You ever had an issue with teachers not wanting to start school too entirely?
No, they, they like to pay.
You mentioned a coordinator. Who, who, who are you looking for, for a coordinator? Someone local?
Someone local, yes. So you guys would be, um, the responsible for high-end person. Uh, you would pick who you felt like was gonna be a good fit for each position and we would work together. We have interview questions. We can sit in on interviews as well. And, um, you guys would kind of be more responsible of picking the person that you felt like was a good fit.
So this would be a person that we would be responsible to pay?
Well, we, we would cover.
Eighty-twenty.
Yes, well, in the beginning, we would cover pretty much all of the salary. Yes.
And that would be their only job?
That would be their only job.
And you mentioned books in the home. Are those delivered personally or those?
We purchase those Raisin to Reader books. We have a, a, um, company that we purchase those books from.
Are they mailed to you?
Uh, yes, we ship everything to the school district. So the school district will receive all of those items.
The school district, they don't have to pass those out?
No, the coordinator would be responsible for that. Yep.
I've got one more question.
No, you're.
You mentioned transition to school for the kids who have never been to school. And so you were talking about having mothers. Maybe introducing them to the school, the teachers, et cetera. How do you identify those students or those mothers?
Those are gonna be mothers that are in our program. Those are gonna be mothers that the coordinator, because the coordinator's gonna be always recruiting. So she's gonna be out in the field. She's gonna be setting up booths in the community, just letting people know about the program. So when she finds and identifies families that may have never had any. Uh, experience in Head Start or the families that are in our program, current, that are transitioning into kindergarten or into Head Start. We're going to support those families too as well. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's your implementation timeline?
Implementation timeline is January for this.
Yeah, so we're looking to start in January. So we would look at trying to train staff in December. January if needed and get, you know, programming. I know last year your after-school program started in January. So that would be our timeline to do that. And in the following program year, we want to start at the beginning of the school year and have it go all year long for families.
So Rhonda, I don't remember if I asked you this this afternoon, but this, this line out of two nineteen, Save the Children, the sixteen thousand two, two fifty? It's in the bud, it's in the, the budget? Or not the budget, but the financial? Is, is that a grant that you guys had given?
Yes, uh, food security grant that we have given you guys. And we have lots of different opportunities for grants that will come along throughout the year. Um, during COVID, we gave out so many grants. We were begging people, please take this grant, please take this grant. So there's gonna always be opportunities for you guys to receive different grants. You, we just have to identify, and that's an issue we've ran into in the community, is identifying a liaison to take over that task. It's always. You know, people want to do these things, but having someone there to do it. And so once we identify someone in the community, we can just call on them, hey, we had this grant. It's gonna come out. Most times, nine out of ten Save the Children grants are easy. We have someone, um, on the national team that the person, the liaison can call. To walk through the grant. If they submit the grant something wrong, they can call them, say, hey, go fix this, 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 and you're good to go. So we try to make it as easy as possible with those.
This is when we have to decide tonight?
Well, my recommendation is that we tell them to rock and roll and get ready to go with January. Because it is gonna take some time to get, get boots on the ground. You want to get that train set up. It wouldn't start until, until January. In any event, if, if this doesn't go the way we want it, we can say bye. So at, at some point, but what's, what's good about this group is that even in year two or three, if we can't come up with our twenty percent of it.
Yeah.
They work hard to supplement what we might need. So we might only come up with five percent, so we need some more help. They go out, try to figure out how they can get the other fifteen percent. So they work hard to make sure that we can get all these services to our community. But also a, a huge piece for getting kids ready for school. And, and working with parents that, so if they're, they're ready to go, the conversations are working inside the home, that there's some training that can take place. So there's, there's, there's many, many positives.
And we also, before we even create a budget, we have a partner planning meeting. And that's where all the key stakeholders get on the call. And this is our honest, open meeting where we're talking through, hey, this is what we can do. This is what we cannot do. We're never gonna say, oh no, we can't do that. We want you guys to really work with us and we want to work, we want to make this a partnership. So whatever you guys can do is what you can do and we're gonna figure it out from there after that.
What's the average cost for a school district or a science?
So I, like overall budget? Over, yeah, overall budget or cost share?
Like a forty percent.
Either one.
The twenty percent?
And that's not at the beginning. I mean, we, like, I just went, like, there's been times where we've had some districts like, hey, this is all we can do. And we come back to the table and we, we don't ever say, okay, well, you can't do that. Well, our partnership's over. That ever happens.
What, what would be the average?
Overall actual, we could, I think ratio is at twenty percent. We could pull up a budget. If we can, if we have time, we could pull up a budget and show you the exact amount. I'm not sure about that. Or we could send it to the superintendent. Yeah.